Okay, I'm gonna call the in order.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our.
I've arranged. We're gonna do the.
President Dunn.
Here.
Vice President Everard.
Here.
Treasurer Gaten. Secretary Fritz.
Here.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Here.
And trustee Wadore.
Here.
I'd like a motion to go into recess.
I'll make that motion to go into recess to disenable committee on local government efficiency. Efficiency.
Thank you. It's a motion we need a second. Right. Lloyd.
Secretary Fritz.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Wadore.
Yes.
President Dunn.
Yes.
Now, we need to approve the minutes of February 20th meeting.
We need to do a roll call to the disenable committee for a moment.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay, President Dunn.
Here.
Vice President Everard.
Here.
Treasurer Gaten and Secretary Fritz.
Here.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Present.
Trustee Wadore.
Present.
And member Livingston and member Palmer.
Present.
And executive director.
Alton Lee can approve the minutes. Hey Ray. We just started and we're in recess signing off meeting. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 20th meeting. The signing of the meeting.
Go ahead.
So. Okay. Hey Sean. Move the seconded.
President Dunn.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
Secretary Fritz.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Wadore.
Yes.
Member Palmer.
Yes.
Executive Director Kessler.
Yes.
Okay, public comments on the committee? And public comments for the committee that were.
Anybody at home, public comments on the disenable committee?
We've already, are we dissolving this?
Then you were gonna take a vote, not yet.
Not yet.
But you're just gonna motion to adjourn, and if I'm saying this correctly, Andrew. C A D N A, is that right?
Uh, seen die, close enough.
Die, close enough, seen die, okay.
Okay. Okay, so we need a motion to adjourn. It's been sued and seconded by Ray. Go ahead with the roll call.
President Dunn. Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Treasurer Gaten. Treasurer Gaten.
Yes, sorry.
Secretary Fritz.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yeah.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Wadore.
Yes.
Member Palmer.
Yes.
Executive Director Kessler.
Yes. All right, that meeting is adjourned.
Okay.
Go get your hike.
Sorry to drag you out from that.
No problem.
Thank you for all the help.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry about that, I got caught up on the see they die.
Yeah. I was sort of daydreaming a little bit there.
When I ever salute there?
Okay, we go to public comments number one. Anybody out there for maybe public comments? I guess not. Very done. Move to six point oh presentations. Mr. Powers, you wanna do a hunting report, recommendations?
Yep. What do you? For the benefit of the senior board members, I have a brief presentation tonight, so only two slides for you. But the newer board members, I have in the past couple of years on a comprehensive review of the hunting program and how it works to the district. So if you have questions about that before next month's board meeting and the directives, please reach out to me and I can provide that, those types of questions and answers.
It was in the packet too, right?
Yeah, I know, in the past couple of years, I've gone into a kind of a deep dive of the hunting program just to explain how it works and how the entire district is involved in the hunting program. I get the privilege of communicating to the board each year, but this really does involve pretty much everyone here at the district. And as you may remember, we went through those processes in the past. But for tonight, we're just gonna go over the high level review of last year's program and then also the consensus that I need in order to provide you guys the administrative directives for this upcoming year's program. The 23 highlights, if you wanna move those or minimize those names, we can see those figures that'll be needed here. But the first one is probably, I think it was two years ago, I came to the board and we discussed the app development concept. And going back from when I first started doing this program, one of my goals initially was to get us off of paper. We used to have paper in all the sign-in boxes. We had to bring the, first put the paper out, then bring it in, then process the data two or three times. It was just a very long process. So we moved quickly into forms, web forms, where the customer had to sign in on one web form to sign on another web form. And then the foundation invested in the hunting program and moved to that web, mobile friendly website. And the customer didn't like that as much, so we really wanted to move to the app. And then a lot of the credit, actually all the credit should go to Cindy Rendell, our G I S analyst, who developed the web form for us to utilize our G I S software that we currently have at the district. So all the information from the customers coming into the district, we have spatial information. So the cops, excuse me, the police officers can see where we have hunters out there in real time, which is important for safety, but also for efficiency of enforcement. So they're actually going out to where people are. And then on the backend, it's fantastic for our data processing. It's reduced the amount of hours that our analyst has in processing that data to provide the end product for those annual reports. That's a big deal. Great evolution and we're very happy with this end product and the customers appreciate the project as well.
And we implemented it just this last year?
Last year. And then the big one, this is another one of my goals when I took over 10 years ago, was to try and make this program profitable. And we were really close, as you remember, last year. This year, we did have a net operating income of seventeen thousand and five hundred twenty-three, that was driven by that record revenue of sixty thousand dollars. And then the economic gain, I've explained this in the past, but that's really related to the value of deer management and deer removal. So that figure is brought forward based on our culling figures, how, what it cost the district to cull deer, specifically for our Lake in the Hills program. This is the most up-to-date figure in the past. I was using our previous figures, but this was what it cost us per deer in this current year's program at Lake in the Hills.
That's replacing vegetation.
No, that's specifically for deer removal. The vegetation, if you remember that presentation, that's much, much higher. That's based on replacing in species costs and that's in the million to two million dollar range as far as value per acre. So to replace some of those E N T species, those very conservative species that aren't out there, you can't purchase them, very expensive. So that just, that one was showing the overall value, ecological value. This one is specifically economic gain if the district were to go remove those animals. And then this has been an issue, this last one, for about nine years. This is kind of the negative side of creating an extremely popular program is there's very high demand. And what we've tried to do in the past and some of those revenue figures is we tried to make it more expensive for the non-residents, but they still really, really enjoy the program. So we have non-residents who are getting a spot and there's residents who don't get a spot each year. We've arranged the program so that it's almost every other year that somebody doesn't get in one year, they get in another, the next year because of point system. So you get points for not being in. But there is some concern out there from residents that the non-residents are getting a spot and they aren't. When you actually dive into that situation, it's not like there's a group of non-residents that are coming in together and displacing an entire resident group. You have a couple residents and then a non-resident. I've had conversations with some of our customers and they say, we understand that as a resident, but then my grandpa can't handle this or my brother can't handle this. And one thing that predated me, this is John Kramer's discussion point before I took over the program, was about 60%, if it ever got to where we only had 60% residents, then we would shut off the non-residents. And we're currently about 80% residents in our program. So it's still the majority of the program residents, but that is an issue that has kind of been percolating in the background for almost a decade. The next slide is gonna be everything that we need consensus for, for this year's program. From the hunting committee, the recommendation is to evaluate a zone for Beck's Woods. Again, because we had that high demand, we've been trying to look at opportunities to have deer hunting. And kind of leading into that last bullet there is ID and our C W D culling. In the past, our internal procedures were called to then, we wouldn't have our hunting program in the same places that we had ID and our culling. We broke that this year because of some increase in C W D prevalence at Whining Creek, but I did limit the amount the state would remove based on our knowledge of the population there. But we felt that it was really important from an ecological standpoint to reduce some of that C W D prevalence. And as you see from the surveys, that's also a concern to the hunters. So what we're looking forward to is kind of eliminating that standard operating procedure and allowing the hunting program to exist in same areas where we have the culling program, but then just figure out based on population, how many deer we should allow the state to cull each year and just do it on a case-by-case basis by site and use our statistics to guide those two. So we're looking at adding a zone at Beck's Woods. The next one, we've had a conflict with a neighbor, a new neighbor at the site. And in order to reduce that conflict, we want to adjust the zone boundary at Pioneer Bend, just the access away from the property owner. We have a number of situations where hunters are bringing their equipment in a field. We do allow them to use decoys, for example, and they may stash that decoy in the weeds or something within their zone. But if it's brought to an officer's attention, they don't know whose it is. So we're proposing to make a rule that you have to identify your equipment when you leave it in the field. The other situation that occurs is there's a lot of trail cameras that hunters use and there's also trail cameras that aren't supposed to be out there. So we wanna make sure that the officers can quickly identify that it's our hunters' trail cameras versus illegal trail cameras. So that would be an equipment ID rule. We need to remove one of the waterfall zones at Coon Creek because of the restoration that's occurring down there. It'll be turned into grassland prairie, so we can't waterfall on it. And then each year, the firearm switch, the firearm sites switch dates based on the Illinois first season, Illinois second season. So that's just a switch that we do each year and that's for management purposes. It's difficult to manage an entire site in one weekend. So what we try to do is alter from year to year, the first season to second season, to try and increase the analyst harvest at least every other year on those sites. Auto qualification archery, previously, there was a request for us to qualify all of our archers. And because of how robust the program got and how many people we're having, we, ever since the COVID year 2020, we've been doing auto qualifications and we would like to continue to do those auto qualifications where our top archers don't have to qualify every single year. The state of Illinois approved the use of rifles for deer hunting and we have inquiries each year from our hunters to allow rifles. And we have communicated, excuse me, we discussed it at the committee level. And even on state-owned areas, they are not allowing rifles. So we think it's best just to continue with our shotgun and muzzleloader primarily because it was very difficult for us to figure out a rule that would work for the rifles. And if you have additional questions, Sergeant Stewart can probably speak to that more. But essentially, the rule opens up a lot more rifle opportunities than we're comfortable with. So it was difficult to narrow it down to what we felt comfortable with. The clarification on site closures is just some language between our waterfall hunting directive and our deer hunting directive that we just need to clean up to clarify when there's closures. And then I kind of referenced the ID and our C W D culling. But the recommendation is to kind of modify our internal procedure to allow ID and our culling to take place in areas that we do have the hunting program. The reason we wanted to bring that to the board is because you may hear from public that there's concern with the ID and our culling specifically impacting our hunting. So if that'll take any questions.
So on the survey, somebody asked if they could have their permit on their phone rather than carrying the documents. That's, see, I know for fishing, I always like to take my fishing license, I'm, you know, I'll keep it on my phone.
Right.
How do we respond to that?
That would, I think that would be fine. We just need them to show that it wasn't gonna be a rule change. That would just be like a procedural thing that Sergeant Stewart would communicate with the officers. But as long as they are able to show that they have their permit, we do have in our rules that they need to be able to display their permit, I believe that that would qualify as displaying.
It would and we've had it in the field already. People have just, it's all very able to show it. We're okay with it. So we can respond to that kind of thing during the long run.
For the resident versus non, I know you said there's a point system for somebody doesn't get in this year for a resident. Have we thought about maybe doing, is there, does that also apply to the non-residents? There are also points.
It's renewed in the government. So. I can, I don't have it memorized, but I can go through all the point systems, but the resident is double.
Gotcha.
So if you have two groups that are equivalent otherwise and there's three residents in one and two residents and non-residents in the other, this group is gonna be higher than this one in our lottery. And this is, I should mention, this is specifically to the archery combo. So we were accommodating everybody who applies to the waterfall program and the firearm program.
Are there any other questions? So we wanna go ahead and give a directive or approve their recommendations. So I think we have a consensus that go ahead with the approval of recommendations.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Yeah. Awesome, nicely done.
So you'll see this on the regular meeting, which we'll talk about, as item 1212 and residents accepting the report and then consensus and then you bring that the next month, the actual directive or the following.
Okay.
That's the point you heard all day.
Yes.
Okay, move to new business. Kennedy House roof replacements. Director of operations.
Yes. I believe it was in the middle of winter, I don't remember if January or something like that, we reported that there was, the roof was leaking over there. We did get a contractor out, but we got a break in the weather. Contractor went out there, did a patch here, there, replaced a shingle or two, just to prevent it from getting any worse. Did identify that the roof does, if we're going to stabilize the structure, does need to be replaced. And so while they were there, we asked for, you know, to have him give us a proposal for an estimate. A couple different options there. One is asphalt shingles, base price of thirteen thousand dollars and change. We know that'll go up because there's going to be sheeting that'll need to be replaced. We're not sure how much until you start taking up the shingles, you can't tell that. And then.
John and I had to, yeah, please. Did receive some more information from the estimator that's, I mean, with the candy roof. And that being cedar shake, it's more unlikely that it's won by the gaps in between. Typically, that's how cedar shake is installed. If we do go asphalt, he's saying that it's more unlikely than that it will have to be exactly the gap for one addition of five thousand dollars. So just one of the two.
Now, that number was in there, it was forty-five hundred or forty-eight hundred foot sheeting down. So it's probably likely your thirteen thousand, if you go with asphalt, it's likely the thirteen thousand plus the five thousand. So you're talking, you know, just, just under twenty grand for the roof, for asphalt. And if you use the cedar shake, I think that goes up. I'm sure they're gonna have to put sheeting down as well. And that's, that'll take it up to, you know, you know, probably fifty-five thousand or something like that if you use a cedar shake. There was some debate last time about whether we invest in it or not. We leave that for you guys to discuss and debate. We provided the cost estimates. If you want us to go on it, you need to give us a nod and we'll go on it. We did include that in the budget, it was added to the budget at the, you know, late, late in the project. But we do need a nod on whether you want us to move on that or not.
A discussion on that, we were going with pros and cons. We're trying to save the structure. So I think, remember that we talked about going with the asphalt just to keep the things, the building intact at this point. But we figure out what we're gonna do with it. I'm gonna suggest that we almost go out with an R F P sometime, throw it out there to see if we can get general public to maybe come up with an idea on what we can do with that house. But that's top of the road, but we probably need to at least close it up so it doesn't deteriorate anymore. What are the thoughts for you that? We don't wanna spend money on it, but twenty grand is twenty grand. It's gonna be popping up a bit.
Yeah. Were there other issues with the building?
Not at this point, I don't think, John or.
We need to replace some lintels, those are the things either over or under the windows that are there. It needs some general woodwork repairs and things like that, sealing up the envelope. And then the last thing it would need, last, the next thing it would need is to paint all the trim on the house. So it's, it's an old house and it needs attention.
So I just think if we don't do something, it's gonna just continue to fall into disrepair and somebody will be.
It's in the public view.
But what is our, what's the goal for it? What's the end game? Just to restore it to be there? I'm gonna go, I'm gonna be devil's advocate and stay with what I said before. If we don't have a plan for it and we haven't had a plan for it and it's surrounded by not trails or anything else that can, I don't know why. I mean, I understand. I live in a very, very, very old house. I understand. But I'll put my money into Fox Bluff. That's, that's what I, that's what I.
It's your pick with this.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, I think I kind of echo the same thing Linda does. I know we don't have a solid plan yet or what the, you know, it's not, it's not really on our roadmap at the, at the time. I do understand we need to close it up so it doesn't get any worse. But, you know, are we just gonna fix the roof to tear it down, you know? I don't know.
Well, I would argue we fix the roof by time to find something else for it. I don't think we've done much to try and find somebody that would be interested. Is there some business that we want to go, some, you know, some family or historic that would want to restore it? I don't know.
I don't know. I think we've been here for five years and it hasn't changed.
Well, I guess I'll, my two cents, I can see with the roof. But then again, you know, like, well, woodwork outside and then it's like throwing money down a rattle if you have no plans. So I think at least the roof.
I'd say the same thing.
I mean, you know, then pretty soon now the windows are no good.
Has it ever been used in the past for anything?
Well, the people lived in it.
Right.
Years ago.
It was district housing for a while and then we no longer continued district housing on that property. And since then, it has not been, it's just been closed up and no access.
Could there be any removal for district housing?
Not without putting a lot of money in it.
Yeah. We're also going away from that too. Right. It's a blind list.
I did visit that house when I went online, places of what we should restore or what, just the list of the houses or the list of the properties. And you look inside there, it needs a lot of help. I mean, if you look in the windows, it's just.
So the chances of having someone wanting to do, make something out of it, then I actually haven't been up there lately, it's been a couple of years, so I don't know. I don't wanna make a decision that we'll regret though down the road, you know, it does topple in. But it's up to you all.
Did you refresh my memory? Your words that were located around?
Right down the road, the one that's up on the hill.
On the hill there.
Yeah, the brick. Supposedly a stage stop.
The stage kept up here, the women would stay over there. Yeah. The district, it was fact prior to the district acquiring the property and us acquiring the home was the condition of the full acquisition, which is a commonplace. You'll think we're talking on some of our properties, but we see buildings along with that. At our historical, just to refresh everyone at the historical meeting that we had, the group that was present seemed to have a more of an interest on, you know, McConnell Farm and Fox Bluff and Forest, the Powers Walker and Hooters Farm as areas. However, individuals related to that, because there was some discussion earlier on in the year where the Paulson family reached out to the district and the rumors that we were raising that house and that decision that that was, there was some discussion and concern that was expressed during that time.
I guess I gotta change my mind. Well. Well, here's my, here's my thinking. Okay, we got in Harvard there, right by Old Motorola, it's the same thing. They got that old house and, you know, the Historical Society wanted to save it and so-and-so wants to save it and.
That's the Coventry House.
Yeah. So you think it's a good idea now you're trying to save it? No, I, no.
Oh, you said.
I don't know.
You know, I gotta admit that Coventry House, just as an input, I don't know if it means anything to you guys, but we, we protected that, what we thought, that the property owner from the Historic Society that said, hey, that's their property, they don't want to, they don't wanna, you know. And I see that building going downhill.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm really sorry that we helped ruin that building. That's a really neat building. You know, did you mention you took it, it's a flag building and you took it as part of an agreement to keep it up? I mean, as a board or?
This house here?
Yeah.
You didn't make any promises to the house. It had been flagged by the Penn County Historical Society prior to the district acquiring the property.
Yeah, that was part of the property.
Related to the land agreement, how the road was named or our intention to make sure that Paulson Road and how we referred to our property, there were some specific requirements.
The Historical Society that attended the historical sites meeting didn't really show a lot of interest either.
But not to necessarily have it raised, but maybe if it was in the hands of private ownership and it was simple to make that happen, then maybe it could still survive. They didn't say it didn't have historical significance, right? They just said maybe it wasn't with other priorities, because somebody else would give it some TLC and.
That's what I thought, we allowed an R F P maybe to see if someone would try to take it, you know, privatize it.
I just figured if we're not ready to pay to demolish it, we ought to at least keep it intact.
Can I add something?
Yes, go ahead.
So when the examiner was out there, a portion where water was coming into the house on the inside, that wall, there were two of those cedar shake shingles missing. So he felt that's where the wall's falling down, you know, along the wall into that second level. And damage the drywall, of course. Some paint is still on the drywall, but it's dried up since then, of course. Bigger issue with the house, with the roof itself, is that we have two four to five foot sections of ridge cap that are missing. He said, so what had happened, you're burning a storm or high wind event, it peeled those shingles back, right? And that's like a domino effect, starts opening that up. So he went up there with some ice shield, the shield let out temporarily and then also patched up, you know, replaced the two missing shingles, you know, to buy the district time on whatever you'd like to decide to do with the building. Inside the house, that third level, there is a black hole now starting to build up. You know, at the Pita that, they called a bedroom, but it's, they got ruined for lack of a better term. He would recommend it if we get go with asphalt, thirty year shingles, you know. So again, something considered for twenty thousand dollar investment, if you decide that you wanna keep it. It will extend the life of, like John had said, there's other portions of the house. But those individuals that he actually ruined, we made a place we did do mortar work to it out planting a number of years ago. And again, that will have me revisited to down below at some. And again, that will happen, we revisit it too down the road at some.
What do you think your recommendation would be then?
Again, there there's interest from from another group, you know, rather than total. I don't think they were here at the meeting last month with the other groups that were more interested in McConnell. When we touched on Fox Bluff, it started to be an answer there, but again, for eighteen to twenty thousand dollars, um like Pat had said, you know, you put a roof on it, it will extend, you know, the life of the house, again. To what point, I don't know, and again, what the, what it's gonna be for in the future, it's hard to communicate.
The roof is a Band-Aid, but it buys time, like that's.
Is there a possibility if you were just to say to buy time for a year, but then the board commits that maybe there could be a subcommittee to answer the question, why or should we continue to invest in it? And if we can't figure that out within the course of the next year, then we kind of put ourselves on a, on a schedule.
I think we've done that. I think, I mean, I don't, I that's the only, but we're the only one here that's been for five years. Yeah, it's my, it's my thing.
Several times.
And actually since people drive by that house every day, that's, and they never say a word until well, geez, you know, we might tear it down, right? But you know, we've got.
Well, we need to probably tear it down and just get rid of this.
You know what I mean? It's like nothing.
Nobody says anything until you're going to do something.
Something and then it's like, no, we don't want, can't do that. Just my opinion, alright.
It's unfortunate that we're at a time that we are, because I think again, we've got some a lot of activity that we're working on for this year that are really important. And so prioritizing where those dollars and efforts are spent. Um again, looking for the larger goals versus the immediate that seem to be in front of us, it's a challenge, you know, so I just keep that in mind in our decision making process.
How about this, just to move things on, I'll I'll make a motion that we fix the roof. And when it goes down, it goes down.
And I guess.
I agree.
So I'll put a motion on and then we can go run it out and, you know, we'll kick it around forever on the way.
I guess we can do that, we only can, don't have to make the decision for sure tonight either, but eventually we'll have to, so.
You can make it after I get off.
Then the figures get.
How much would it cost to take it out? Any ideas on that?
More than you think.
Uh yes or no? I mean, you'd be surprised. There's some contractor, well, yeah.
Right, because you gotta go through all the permitting stuff, but. Larry, we got a motion on the floor, we gotta have a second.
It's had a second.
We do have a motion on the floor, so yeah, we need a second. Being no second.
This is just, well, it's on a consent agenda, so it's not here for action, but we're getting a consensus.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
Right, so we just have to lean into, because then we would, and the reason why we formally, well, we didn't put it as an action item, but it is here. Yeah, I did see a discussion, it's discussion only.
Yeah, so we can't really do that till the regular board meeting.
And I don't have it as an action item for the regular board meeting, but I could repost if we want to, or we could wait to table this. Or, you know, just put it on to an item for actual action in April. Um or or I could change the agenda for next Tuesday night if the board wanted to move on this. Um we didn't have a moving on to an action item on the regular meeting, because if we went, which again, I give the general, was the less amount, which was under the thirty thousand dollar bid requirement, was to, would not require an action by the board. But we can't move until the board gives us direction.
John, how long would it take to to get an estimate for demolition?
I'm trying to do that right. If I can figure out its square footage quickly, I can um say sixteen then. I can.
No, I don't think that's much of a factor, because what Austin is gonna take to continue to keep this building up. Whenever time I drive by, you know, we still have a mow and we still gotta do all that stuff. It's just, it's employee time.
So what would be the solution of just if we're still not ready, just to at least board it up or something, have somebody out there to board and do some temporary? Again, buys you a little bit of time, but still kicking the can, but you're not expending the full eighteen thousand. It's a fraction of that. I don't, I don't.
Yeah, based on the costs that we had to demo the um the the ones recently, Glacial Park, the three buildings um and the size of it, it's uh about seventy thousand dollars to demolish it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I see that.
It's a different. You gotta haul everything away.
Dig a hole, we need to use a round excavator and go out there like Daley did, man. Take a hole.
I think um I'm kind of wavering, but I think since since the money's already in the budget for the roof, I'd be okay with doing the roof for now. But I would be really hard pressed to spend any more money beyond that. We'd have to have a really good plan to for what we want to do with that.
Okay, so that's one, one so far to keep it and two.
Nice, I would keep the building, but put a roof on it.
Put a roof on it, yeah, alright.
I would buy time, Chris. You know, I'm new to the, to putting the roof on, I'm new to it, but my caveat would be we have to figure out within the next year what we would do with the building. Self-imposed timeline. If we can't answer the why, again, and it seems like you guys have been at it for four, five, six years, this is my first year. The why thing you'd have to say is that the best use of the, you know, county's funds. The other piece that's kind of bouncing around in my head is it may be cheaper in the short term to to keep it than tearing the building down.
Well, eventually, I mean, it's gonna deteriorate and look really bad.
That's why we need the why, yeah.
I like your idea of the subcommittee to put some action on it, to to find out if there's anything, you know, can the economic development folks out here, have they got any interest in?
Yeah, well, I was fascinated with the honey piece in our our packet today in how we went from it not being profitable to being a profitable piece. In how the usage is just shot up over the, I forget, in the table that we had, if it was eight or ten, just the amount of users, we've generated a profit. I don't hate me, I just wonder is there's, as you think it through, is there some way to use it to gain some type of profitability? I don't know.
Possible, but probably not.
I had no idea, make it all ADA and all that other stuff.
Yeah, I don't think, I think restoring or trying to keep buildings isn't really in our.
Part of the. That's standard lane. Yeah.
Well, we don't have to make that decision. Obviously, we don't make that decision, so I, but uh right now it's a three to three and so I have to be a tiebreaker, so. Alright, well, let's.
You wanna stop for your afterwards?
I didn't hear that. Is there any additional information, I guess, and I know everybody's with time and effort. I think we provided you back some figures, you would ask them for a demolition class, John, but another. Is there anything else um that you would need from us to help in your deliberation of this?
I don't think of anything.
Yeah, I was just thinking that the boarding idea was actually pretty interesting. I mean, without spending the money putting a roof on, would there be some way to even spend less money to to kind of board it up and completely protect it versus putting a roof on, so.
Not really.
No.
It's a rougher, rougher, right?
Some of our other.
Reserve and buy yourself some time, you know, a year.
Talked about a tar blast time.
Yeah.
But but as far as the restoration and and again, looking at best practice and where other organizations have been with historic structures, and I'm talking about our neighboring conservation districts and forest preserve districts, a restoration doesn't need to be in full public access into the building. Sometimes it's as minimal as it was existing and stand there. They take the facade and they take care of the external maintenance and that's it. And then whatever they do to make a a place where you can pull in, there's a plaque, there's history and it's preserved from that very minimal standard up to a full restoration. So again, I think there's a lot of gradient of determination between what the investment cost is.
Oh, yeah, the only problem I can see though for public ass, access is pretty tough at the, sitting on a hill and stuff, so. We probably have other structures around the county that we could do that too and that'd be a safer place, that's all I can. Well, let's uh uh let's put it on the April agenda. We won't push it till to this year, this month, if that works for me. I mean, nothing's gonna happen in thirty days.
For the rain.
Well.
And maybe this heavy snow.
And you're in, you're black.
Yeah, exactly.
Pricing as a proposal, will they hold those prices?
Well, um we we would, I, we'd have to go out and get free quotes, you know, to follow our purchasing policy. Um so you you typically get your best prices in this timeframe. Once you start getting into June uh or, you know, even in May, you're gonna get higher prices. But, you know, and we're not gonna see it double. It won't double.
No, but that's a consideration, because we're already saying with the investment, so if in fact and and again, not pushing it, but just saying, you've got a, you've got, you've got one quote right here that was received under the twenty, you did the multiple. So you get your regular ones, they could move on that, you know, tonight, but that would be.
Yeah, I don't think there'll be that much difference, so. What do you think, John?
No, I don't think they're, you know.
With the construction.
Yeah, that's basic.
Yeah. So let's put it at equals, if that's okay with everybody, okay? Okay, seven point two partnerships.
I think so you learned to start that.
But first is a uh letter of support for the Savannah Institute. Savannah Institute is a nonprofit that works with agroforestry. So probably the agroforestry that we're most familiar with are Christmas tree farm, black walnut stand, apple orchard, those types of things. So Savannah Institute is applying for a grant at the federal level that's being administered through National Fish and Wildlife Foundation to bring technical assistance to what they call institutional landowners. Those are landowners like the district, has large volumes of land, corporate headquarters, um areas that have more than a few acres to try to help them develop plans to go into agroforestry if they'd like to. The new agroforestry pushes for crops as well. So we include things like nut trees and berry bushes and things like that. We've been asked to sign on as a supporter. It will not cost the district anything. Uh we probably, we could be reimbursed up to four thousand dollars for any staff time that we put in. Uh but it would help us to be able to take a look at our current sites and see if there's a way we can integrate agroforestry with the Savannah management that we already do. So it's pretty much a a plus for the district. Um we had to put in the support letter ahead of time because of the the timing of the grant, but we can withdraw if we don't wanna go into it. So that's kind of the project in a nutshell. It's uh it's funding is coming out of current farming that deals with regeneration agriculture.
So it's already been done, so there's no action.
Um well, you should, if you don't want us to be part of it, we sell them, you know, we're pulling out our letters.
I like it.
Yeah, they're got some suitcase downside.
Yeah, it's a way, way, I think, so I agree, agree, yes, okay.
The next one is money that is coming from the bipartisan infrastructure developer. The board remembers we tried six ways from Sunday to figure out how to tap into the federal money that's flowing out and so far, it's been a pretty tough time. Uh but the US Fish and Wildlife Service at the New National Wildlife Refuge uh has received funding for a three-year term position um doing the same work that our restoration ecologists do uh for working on service land. And so we had a discussion with them. We have memorandums of understanding to share equipment, to share personnel, to share prescribed burning when it makes sense because our lands border one another. And the service, after looking at it, uh has said the position would make more sense, since we already cooperate on land management, if they simply turn the funding over to the district and we hired a term position for three years. There's a lot of moving parts in this. We don't have an agreement yet. But before we go any further on developing an agreement and seeing if it would work, I wanted to make sure that the board was in favor of us going ahead with that. Uh because we don't want to put the work into if it's not something that we support at the board level. So the upshot was, would be that we would want, if this goes through, we develop an MOU that's acceptable and bring it back to the board. Uh the funding has been secured already, so it is there. It would wind up going through our regular human resources department. We would hire it under a job description we already have, at a job description uh and salary level that we already developed last year. And that person would be on as a three-year term employee. Very similar to the two-year term employees that we already have as restoration technicians. So the person would be hired understanding that that is a term job. But for a young person coming out of college, it would be a really great start and feel. So we like board consensus and discussion on if we should go forward and continue to try to shape that.
So we are sort of doing that now.
We have memorandums of understanding where we share equipment, we share training. Uh at times we share personnel if we're working on a combined project. A good example would be the the Lauren Underwood brand. That is a million dollars is being used to restore a hundred and twenty acres no, directly north of Glacial Park. We're working with our own um camp funds on Glacial Park side for a hundred thousand dollar. And we're sharing equipment and permitting and uh and things like that on the combined project. So we're already doing this in a number of areas. We also do it with Hispanic outreach for the um Conservacion de Conservacion program where we have workdays and we um have school programs and we cooperate on the modern program in Crystal Lake. So all the groundwork is already in place. This is uh about three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars that we've been utilizing for additional staff. So what we would like is discussion and consensus to continue to move forward and see that if it would work out for the district in the long run and then bring that agreement back to the board af- after and see if we've got it.
And would this three-year term position be only specific to US Wildlife Service activities or would it be fall into that MOU where you had to share personnel, so we would also be able to use them for other?
Yeah, and that was my first question to the service. You know, we, for us to participate has to be able to be utilized on district land. And initially it was lands that are in the half a cap footprint. But structuring it this way allows us to use that person all over the county because they're our employees. So they can do prescription burning in any of the regions, they can work with equipment in any of the regions. So it's a, it's a pretty good approach for the district to get some short-term extra help.
Yep, um so we have work, there's enough work.
There's plenty of work. One of the things we actually talked about is uh is um having this person um be involved in beaver control.
Oh, great.
Uh because we are shorthanded in that. So there are a lot of gaps we can fill. And there will be no shortage of things to do.
Well, you got a lot of work to do.
So um from my understanding too, the this position, even though it be a district employee, would still be trained with all of the US Fish and Wildlife training to be able to operate and and do things on US Fish and Wildlife property. So they, the US Fish and Wildlife will train this person as well for the prescription burning that we do for the heavy equipment operation to even use a chainsaw to cut a, cut a tree down on under US Fish and Wildlife property. So there is training that will be, not our district ecologists already have already gotten. The US Fish and Wildlife will also pay for some of that training uh to, to be able to work out on the refuge.
So you do know we're gonna get a couple pieces of equipment as well out of it, then it'll be shared.
I think it's a wonderful opportunity for whoever this person is. Honestly, I think it's a great opportunity and I don't, I think it's a win-win.
Any disagreements?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So those items are also under the agenda, we just wanted to have a day like this, so you'd see a little bit more background.
Okay, seven point three uh the agenda for the regular meeting. Was there any questions or anything that needs to be pulled from the uh?
I have one question. Um twelve point ten. Fence, extra fence, more fencing, the path, the water surrounds. Didn't, didn't when they originally put the buffalo there, didn't they have to provide, didn't they pay for the fencing?
Didn't that, didn't when they originally put the bu- uh Buffalo there, didn't they have to provide, didn't they pay for the fencing? You give them a deal on the rent?
Yeah.
No rent or something?
I was, it was, it's a sliding lease, where the rent moves up and the amount of pasture moves up, and what we did initially in the first couple of years is we planted sixty acres two prairie that will support the bison grazing, and it's mature enough now that we can expand those pastures, and so we'll get additional income from the grazing as well. The other thing it does, it sets us up if sometime in the future there is a bison grazing there. The site is still set up for cattle grazing, so we continue a grazing lease into the future.
Was it a great, in terms of paint, based for the fence, wasn't there?
They used that on, the buy, the Buffalo guys paid for it.
No, if they expand it, I I understand they paid for it the first time, but if they, if they expand it. Are they gonna pay for the additional, I think, two extra acres or four acres or something?
I know, it's a lot more acres.
About ninety more acres than they were gonna have.
Oh, wow.
In addition, so, um.
It's the expense on our side, and then we get the revenue from the lease.
Right, plus, it's it's creating infrastructure for the farm program down the line, the fence should be good for a long time. Uh, and yeah, I think you have to build in it too, on the popularity that that program's had. It's really uh been one of the highlight programs.
I've got one other comment real quick, um. In the original designs of of the bison leased property, this was a next step we wanted to to give it as a discussion, and with that, what this will allow us to do is a practice called rotational grazing. So we'll be able to move the bison from the thirty acres that they're in now to two different places, right, so we'll have three, so they'll actually have three different paddocks or fields that they can graze at at different times. And so for us to be able to long-term wise study the ecological impacts of that rotational grazing and what it's doing. Um, that's really why we want to to pursue it, because it was in our original plan to have the ability to do that rotational grazing.
It'll also increase the herd over time, because, and I wish challenge here, because it might, it would probably make them easier to see.
There we go.
But yeah, I don't think our numbers will go up a lot, I think we're right now, we're basically at almost the maximum capacity, I think we have sixty animals per day uh there now, and I I couldn't see us going possibly up a little higher, but I don't think we'll double the amount of bison um this grazing impact, but like I said, it will allow us to rest places uh and do that rotational grazing, or even some patch burning that we uh have in our plan as well to burn a a portion of the of the site every year, rather than just burning it whole thing. So it'll just a lot more for some some great research.
That wasn't mine.
Okay, all right, thanks, John. Uh, any other questions on any of the uh, it's on the agenda? Mentioned twelve point. Twelve point six, we're looking at the is everything, is that everything we talked about originally?
These are the items that are in the budget for approval, and so it's declared here, you can respond to this, but eight direct, eight and three, so we've got vehicles coming from the county and then state did.
So do you want further information on the vehicles?
Uh, well, it was, was some from last year that you didn't get?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, I'm gonna follow.
Well, it's been hard because you.
I can give you a summary, like.
Yeah, we have twenty total vehicles that were re, well, a total vehicles that had a issue in budget for twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, so far this first fiscal year. We ordered and uh have been delivered seven of our vehicles for this third fiscal year. Vehicles that we placed orders for that we had to reacquire that are rolling into next fiscal year. Um, there's four outstanding. If you recall, there's the two one-ton dumps. Those are now with the dealership and putting on the options that we requested. Okay, so we should be receiving those relatively soon, and then there's the two replacement vans, the price of the cylinders, we placed those orders as well. They're expecting around a three or four month turnaround time on on those, that that is through the one tons or through the state purchase procurement program. Meanwhile, the other trucks as well as the vans steer the company. Okay?
Sure.
So then what you see uh for eleven additional vehicles to be purchased uh this upcoming fiscal year, that was everything on that list are pickup trucks or utility trucks, so therefore, some of that will be, all of that will be going through the county bid program again. Uh, and those are pretty much readily available, the one exception to that, of course, is another one-ton dump. So we spoke to the county about the uh availability of the one-ton dump, they said I would try through the state, so we were going to then uh purchase through the state. That one-ton dump will get a quicker turnaround with that than we would with the county, because they're not even working out the bid for one of our dump trucks. It's starting to turn around quicker too, uh on the order, and we've seen those vehicles even through the state program. Fleet vehicles are becoming more readily available. So, the one-ton dumps have been waiting up to a year and a half on. It should be much quicker with this one-ton dump that we need to order this next fiscal.
So.
That's pretty much where 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 we are.
Okay, so in the last, this fiscal year, next one, what are these? What percentage uh have of vehicles have we replaced on the fleet, is it a very large percentage?
Probably have between seventy and seventy-five fleet vehicles.
Okay.
So we're looking at twenty, we're looking at well.
Yeah, okay.
Five percent.
Yep.
It's it's substantial, but again, there was there was a backlog for about three or four years.
Right.
Due to COVID and and lack of production, and again, once they started producing, fleet vehicles were at the bottom of that, but but they're starting to catch up now.
This this order here would catch the district up and and make us flush.
Okay.
Um, so it, you know, we've had, as several of your trustees have been around, we've been through this saga many, many times. I think this is, this catches us up, and so we're we're where we ought to be. And now get back into that situation where we're replacing and repair, replacing only as necessary, and not that, not to catch up that we've been funny for the last four years.
Primarily that's about four to five replacement vehicles.
Yeah.
Okay.
On average.
Any questions on any of that stuff? Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing that there's not no other questions on the consent agenda. Move on, seven point four. Will I explain that?
Yeah, since we have Andrew uh with us, and he's here, Andrew, if you want to take this and share um the recommendation that you have for us on this matter?
Sure, no problem, um, so this case is an eminent no domain case filed by the Department of Transportation. Um, they're doing a roadway project, they need to take some property owned by Commonwealth Edison. The reason um the conservation district is involved in this is because we have a license agreement uh to allow some trails uh over a portion of the property owned by Commonwealth Edison that I think dates back to about two thousand nine. Um, in conversations with staff, um, the areas of the license agreement that we have do not impa- are not impacted by this project, but because uh these agreements are recorded based on the PIN, it just shows that we have an interest in the overall property, so they name us to get clear title. Um, I've spoken to the council representing IDOT in this case. And essentially, to keep us from having to spend money litigating a case that we have nothing to do with. Um, we can file what's called a disclaimer of interest affidavit, essentially saying we don't have any interest in this in this property and and don't need to be involved in the lawsuit. Um, upon execution of that affidavit, they would go ahead and um dismiss us out of the case, so we wouldn't have to do anything there, uh on top of that, we also confirm with staff, there's also language in the license agreement that says even if we did have um areas covered by the license impacted by this. Essentially, there's a a provision in the license that dissolves our license rights, and the property just goes back to to comment, so. Um, either way, we don't have any control over what's happening, but in this case, um all of our interest on the license agreement is not impacted by this case, so the the recommendation is to go ahead and execute this disclaimer of interest and allow us to get dismissed from the case, so we don't have to spend any time or money uh litigating a case that doesn't impact the district.
Sounds like a no-brainer.
Yes.
Thank you, Andrew. Any comments on that, any disagreements? All right, eight point oh.
Thanks, executive director's report. So, a couple of big things to announce, and I did share this with you, um, one, we had closed, the biggest news um was the acquisition of just under a thousand acres by many of our conservation partners as part of the Hack-a-Tap National Wildlife Refuge, so Open Lands, the Conservation Fund, the O N I Audubon Society. And then the McKenham County Conservation Foundation played a role in that, and of course, Friends of Hack-a-Tap. Um, and so just those partners, but the three that led the effort, so that is an amazing conservation success story. And um I just want to give kudos to all of the partners as leadership with uh his work and Friends of Hack-a-Tap. And uh in the foundation as well, um, and uh, so that's big news, so that's about ten percent you would give it a total amount, what is the connection of?
Uh, seven and a half connected miles. I think it's wide point three and a half miles.
Right, so it's the third largest protected open space in the Midwest.
Largest contiguous open space area in northeastern Illinois.
That's awesome.
It is awesome.
Yeah, yeah, so, so great success, um, I know Open Lands and and Conservation Foundation, our fund is over with the village improvement. Uh, again, a great opportunity uh for tourism and just conservation successes, and it connects right Glacial Park and North Branch, all this.
How how's the use of that land gonna be, I mean, I guess, are they gonna have trails and?
The Fish and Wildlife Service has what they call the big three, which is hunting, uh fishing, um, and wildlife viewing. So uh those those activities will certainly go on, but they also have for-ful activities, which include some of the same things we do, hiking trails and stuff like that.
But who's gonna be the lead on that then as far?
I think the plan, and Elizabeth, you may know more about it from the latest stuff, but long-term, the plan is for the holding, all of these agencies are holding agencies. They purchase, they hold the property, and then they transfer it permanently to an agency. And I think they're planning, they're hoping over the next three years to transfer the land in chunks to the Fish and Wildlife Service. And that will be through things like the Duck Stand Program and um Walk-on and and those types of national funds for land protection.
But all the partners, they continually right now, um, when they're holding property, they're doing workdays, management's happening. I mean, it's got just such a wonderful, what I think that this has been, I mean, it's unlike any refuge that is known.
It is pretty unique.
Yeah.
That also includes some of that land, I think I was out there last year. Um, where the conjunction that actual puts up to the north actually, Glacial, high off the Keystone and stuff. Is that part of that?
Yeah, does. It it essentially, if you think of the boundaries as being Harf Berry Trail.
Mm-hmm.
Keystone Road. And then Greenwood Road and the Wisconsin Line.
Right.
So those are really the four outer boundaries.
Sure.
Of the parcel, and it's pretty high-quality land, there's a lot of important resources on it. Number of headwater streams, uh some big wetland restoration potential and hundreds of acres. Uh, some of it is farmland, but the majority of it is not.
Right. Well, it used to be a hot clump.
Yeah, and it got its name, because there was actually a stand of tamaracks on there that are identified in the eighteen thirty-seven Public Land Act. And that was the original name of the farm operation, Tamarack Farm.
Right.
So that's good news, the other news is Thielen uh closed, so thank you Val for working that transaction and to Thielen Sand and Gravel for their gift, and um so now we've completed our acquisition area down in Goose Lake. Yes, we can say that's been completed, and uh so that's another success story on that front. Um, successful festival of sugar maples, again, great two weekends and over, what was the total number? You had to share that, over eight thousand, thousand, which was.
Good.
Thank you for that, we're out, uh President Down was out with our hype with Mike, uh was present, we had county board members in attendance and others, and and that was just a great great two weekends. And um, let's see, what else can I tell you, uh, the other news that we heard on the plan, a conservation area, the eagle that were out there nesting babies, so.
In in that same nest?
In that same nest.
Wow. Uh, that's really good news, you know, it's already on snow.
No snow, and I'm glad we. And then just a reminder of anyone that's interested uh for the McConnell uh Foundation's Ball is on April thirteenth, and so if anyone is interested in going to represent district, we would entertain that. That's all I have.
Anybody have anything else? What comments? This is a public talent, so. I'm playing a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
No second? It's been seconded.
Uh, Trente Zimmerman.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
President Thomas.
Yes.
President Yendori.
Yes.
Senator Gaten.
Yes.
Secretary Prince.
Yes.
And President Down. Thank you, everyone.
Well.